...buildings in Columbia. It's built in 1854, a week before the fire that burnt most of the town down. And it was known as the Franklin and Wolf Variety Store, which the sign over in that lot says it would be the first variety store ever in Columbia. Bullcrap. On top of that, I'm really sorry that somebody wrote "no" on there because that's graffiti, and I don't approve of graffiti. But that building, if it's built there, will be a great place for graffiti. Unfortunately, the R&amp;L gets it. And I just don't like... But my little thing here was to say that this town was filled with variety stores, and we don't need that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance. Anybody else wish to address the commission in opposition to the project? We got another taker back there.
I spoke already.
He spoke already. Now, one bite at the apple. Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet would like to speak? There we are. Do it.
This'll be the first and the last. I'm Connie O'Connor. Many of you know me, but many of you don't know that I was actually here when Columbia became a state park. I'll leave it to you to do the bath, since a lady is never supposed to divulge her age. However, I have been here since that time as a very small child. Columbia is very special, and I had the really good fortune to grow up in two very special places, Carmel and Columbia simultaneously, sort of my whole life. And I moved to Tooluma County permanently in 1970, and I have been a very active community member in Tooluma County and Sonora and Columbia since that time. For Christmas, I was given this sweatshirt, which says, "You can take the girl out of Carmel, but you can never take Carmel out of the girl." So I'm saying to you all tonight that I would substitute that to say, "You could take the girl out of Columbia, a new Columbia that nobody wants and nobody understands, but you could never take Columbia out of the girl." Don't vote for this, please.
Thanks, Connie.
Hi. I'm Janice Nelson, and I just want to express a couple of quick things. I want you... Because I have sat in your chair many, many years ago, so I know what you're going through. And I don't want you to be short-sighted and decide on this particularly business. Because what it's building is not a business that's coming in here. It's a building that we're going to be stuck with for a long time. And I can see that Dollar General will be like a lot of corporations. The big fish will eat the little fish. And though they're big fish right now, there's always going to be a bigger one. And so, we're going to be stuck. I think that Phil Reese had the best idea of you have some mitigation measures that get rid of the big box store when it becomes vacated. The other one is the pedestrian generation. I don't... Generating how many pedestrians are really going to go past that with the children walking to school? We already have that problem, because the county has never addressed adequate walkways from the apartments and low-income areas that they've built. The children already walk on Parrot's Ferry Road out into the road. So let us not sell out for the dollar, the cheap dollar, okay? And let us really think about Dollar General is... Will only be here a short time.
Okay. Thank you.
A quick point of order. If we stop now, and I would love that to happen, and I think you got the idea, speakers now, do they get to be in the rebuttal if such occurs? Or if someone doesn't speak, can they rebut?
I don't think I understand your question.
Okay. My understanding is the pros spoke, then the cons spoke, then the pros get to rebut the cons, and then the cons get to rebut the pros. Is that true?
True.
Sorry. Did you say who?
True.
True, okay. I just was not wanting to miss a chance to rebut, so I wanted to speak.
So you're a speaker now, so you qualify.
Thank you. That was my question. I wanted to make sure I'm qualified. My one quick last point then is night skies. One person made some reference to light pollution. This is yet more light pollution. Our stars are another part of our heritage that most people don't think about. And when you look up and you don't see them anymore, that's another lost wonderment that we can't afford to lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One more chance. I want to make sure everybody has the right to speak. We guarantee it. It's here, and if nobody else is taking it, that maybe is closed. Now, neutral. I can't believe there's anybody who wants to speak neutral, but you have the opportunity to do so if there's anybody who wants to speak neutrally. No neutrals? Not surprising. That's closed. We won't... And we're going to run out of time at 10 o'clock, but let's do what we can. So the next item is rebuttal. And those who spoke in favor of the project now have the right to take part in rebuttal. Three minutes in each. Any rebuttal?
Well, for the guy that brought up Texas and the Alamo, I feel like I'm there right now, defending it. I'm really astounded with all the interest in this particular project and bringing a new business that doesn't, according to the audience here, fit in with the ethos of Columbia, that no one's offered or snapped up these parcels to preserve themselves and to do with it what they will and what they think is good for Columbia. Our property's for sale. I know that the parcel that Dollar General is considering has been for sale for almost a decade. It's something that the group... The particular group that's in here now might want to consider for the future. I'd like to... I'm just going to go through these real quick and rebuttal to the parade of horribles that just went through. First off, Dollar General is not Dollar Tree. Entirely different stores. I noted that even... One of the problems here is that even the historian that you asked could not articulate what kind of design would be appropriate for this particular parcel. And I think because the answer is that there is no answer to that. It's an exercise of tearing down what other people want to build up, as opposed to creating something new for the community. I want to address the lighting issue. That's a general plan requirement. All businesses under the general plan have to provide those lightings. I'm sorry that the speakers don't like that, but that's not something within a business's control these days. I would like to point out that Columbia already has two chain stores, as far as I know. Nelson's Candy Store has three chains, and El Hardin... El Hardin has nine. Most people... Most business people consider that as a sign of success and health and growth and a good thing for a community. Paving for cars. Again, one of the reasons that actually we did not go forward with our particular project on our property is that we would have been required... Required. It was not discretionary that we pave in front of our property. So again, I think that perhaps the community needs to really take a good look at what's going on at a county level, rather than hold a few business owners hostage.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else take part in rebuttal?
Well, since I got up during the proponent part, because I wanted to hear from Dollar General, and I'm all about the process, and I really resented as a member of the public that Dollar General was not able to present their case, because I've never had an opportunity to hear it. So as a rebuttal to all the opponents, I absolutely agree with you, so I have nothing to say about that. Thank you.
I'm not sure what to do with that, but anyway, thank you. I see. Anybody... I guess there's nobody else that qualifies for rebuttal, Ms. Shane? I didn't keep track. Anybody else speak in favor of it?
I don't believe any of the others who spoke are still here.
Okay.
There were a couple others, but...
Okay. Nobody else then will speak in rebuttal? Last chance? Okay. That's closed. Now, we got surrebuttal. And we can have 110 people, or whatever, but we do have a curfew at 10. The pumpkin arrives, and so we can get started. But yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Surrebuttal is limited to rebutting the things that were in the rebuttal. It's only those points that were made out during the rebuttal that are allowed to be surrebuttal. Those specific things, you know.
Don't go back to square one.
So for example, if you didn't believe Dollar Tree and Dollar General were the same thing, you could rebut that, but you can't rebut something you didn't bring up.
Yeah. Okay. Let's give it a... We'll give it a little run here and see about surrebuttal. Welcome to come forward. There's still a three-minute limit. Anybody you want to take part in surrebuttal? Okay, we have a taker.
Hi. It's Claudia Carlson again, from Claude's Market. I think that their last speaker was... Or the speaker before the last was a little confused about the difference between a chain store and a branch store. And the stores that she mentioned were actually branch stores, not chain stores, the difference being that it's not a publicly traded corporation, and also each store is run separate but together, which is a branch store, not a chain store.
Anybody else in surrebuttal? Remember, you address what the rebuttal folks said.
Robin Whitson again. One of my notes in my original comment refers to the chain store/branch store issue. Three Nelsons, nine El Hardins, but one of the most notable statements on Dollar General's website is that they have more company-owned locations than any other retailer in the United States. And so, I think that says it all. I don't have an exact number, but more locations than any other retailer.
Okay, Robin.
Thank you.
Any other surrebuttals? Last chance. This hearing is over with. Now, the matter is coming back to the commission. If we have seven night owls here, we can continue on and try to wrap this up. Or B, we can digest this and meet again tomorrow, same time, same place. And what's the pleasure? To go past 10, it takes a consensus of this commission. I can't just do it. It has to be a consensus. So what's the feeling?
I have more questions.
You have what?
For Bev and staff.
Pardon me?
I have more questions for Bev and staff, so...
Okay. We have more questions, therefore, we aren't probably going to get to resolve this thing without more time.
I'm willing to commit another hour. I'm a night owl, I suppose.
I would agree. I would rather get it tonight if we can. I would rather finish tonight if we can.
Finish it tonight? You're good?
I can finish.
Okay. If I fail to be awake, you will poke me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The matter is back with the commission. Questions of staff, so on. Cole.
Do we still have... Does our telephone line still work?
Is John still here?
Are you still there? John?
I'm here, and I would like to... I would prefer to finish tonight.
Okay. All right, man. Okay. Cole's questions. Go ahead.
So I'm going to ask questions about the intersection first. So regardless of Dollar General, does the intersection, as it was discussed in the Springfield area, get fixed, or is there mediation for that intersection regardless of Dollar General?
Your question again is whether or not that intersection, the star, let's call it the Columbia Star, that's the way it's referred to in the Columbia Circulation Plan. The need for modifying that intersection was identified in a 2010 study as being something that should be changed to make it, I'll call it, more of a standard intersection. The non-standard aspect of it is that awkward angle at which Springfield Road intersects with Parrot's Ferry and the combination of all the other roads that come in there. So the need for a reconfiguration of that intersection was pointed as a needed improvement as far as the level of service that exists in the accident history. It doesn't have a high accident history right now, but the need to make it more conventional was identified. A lot of it has to do with, again, that awkward angle of Springfield.
So is that a yes? Regardless of Dollar General, it's going to get changed?
Yes. It needs to be fixed.
Okay. And then, so follow-up to that then is there's the issue of Columbia State Park. It sounds like they said they were not at the table, but we have proof that they were. But how does that process work? Because my understanding is that that's part of a phase, or is that before Dollar General can start building? That those intersection changes will be happening?
First of all, they're... They only required to pay their fair share towards the improvement. That does not get anything built. It goes into a fund, which would be dedicated towards that improvement. That's a very specific improvement. And the... Any other development that would occur in the Columbia area, future development, potentially could be asked to also contribute towards that specific improvement. So whether, you know, over time, we collect enough money to actually build that, but basically, right now, until the impacts rise to a level of direct need or immediate need, it will be continued to be an unfunded need.
And then, Bev, there's a lot of discussion of painted signs. That's only within the historical corridor, correct?
The Columbia Design Guidelines apply to all parcel zone D in the Columbia area design review, and that is primarily along the Parrot's Ferry Road corridor, yes.
So they could be part of the guidelines of painted signs, or no?
I'm not sure what you're asking. The Design Guidelines do allow for hand-painted signs now.
But they don't require hand...
They do not require it now.
And do we... Was the idea of delisting a park, is that part of CEQA? Is that in any consideration of the planning commission?
That would not... Certainly not be under your purview about delisting the park. That would be a federal and both federal and state action. It's all listed both on the National Register as well as the State Register of Cultural Resources.
And the only last question was the concern of the outcropping in the water. Was that ever an issue? Do we ever know about that? Do we have more information?
Oops. Sorry. Alex Gilbert, planner. They did several studies on the hazardous materials on the site. And they found the records for the removed tanks, and then they went and did soundings to verify there were no other tanks. They've also tested the soil and came up negative. So with the studies that have been paired, there's nothing that's been located on the property.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Thank you. Peggy or Nick, we'll just work down the line.
Yes. Regarding the question that Cole just asked, delisting the park, one of the things that I believe is required that we consider the economic impact to the community. Now, delisting that park would have a huge impact on the economic viability of Columbia. I think that's why we fought so hard to keep Railtown in Columbia. Would that not be a part of this?
Well, if you're asking about some type of an evaluation under the California Environmental and Cultural Act, that acts very clear that speculation is just that speculation. Would building a Dollar General, which is not immediately adjacent to the park, have that kind of effect to result in delisting? I don't know. I do think that it's rather speculative to say that at this point.
Mr. Chairman, if I could... On that delisting thing, it was brought up, and I see they're still here by the state park officials. Could we bring them back up for a question or two?
Yes. You can certainly ask questions.
We can do that. Why don't we wait till your turn comes?
Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to address this one.
Yeah. Peggy, you got the floor. You're done? Okay. Charlotte?
I just need some clarification on a couple of items. Assuming this project is approved, am I to understand that the intersection mitigation fees would be paid, but the project itself would likely be delayed until we collected fees to support?
Yes. The developer would have to make its fair, fair share contribution before they could open their doors. But at this point, the traffic studies have been done, indicate that that intersection will need to be improved in the future, but the amount of traffic has just not warranted this point. Even if we didn't have the money, it's not warranted. It will be at some point in the future, and I think it was 25 years from now, it was significantly long-term that the traffic growth would warrant that kind of an improvement.
Thank you. Another question. The plan calls for a sidewalk along Parrot's Ferry Road and then projecting into the entrance of the Dollar General store. Is that a delayed project? Would that be built as the building was built?
The proposed improvements in the front of the store call for widening of the existing pavement in that immediate area and building a sidewalk across the entire frontage of the property they have. They also have proposed improvements that would bring a walkway towards the front door. Are you asking specifically those improvements have to be built when the project is initially constructed?
But only those. I'm aware that sidewalks are projected at a later time along that corridor, but those would not be built. And so, we would have a sidewalk in front of the project, which would abut. That's correct?
Yes. The proposal currently is that the immediate frontage would have sidewalk improvements and that a traffic impact mitigation fees that they would be required to pay would go into a fund that could be used for other Parrot's Ferry Road upgrades, because it's a listed project under the Traffic Impact Mitigation Fee Program. Where those monies get spent in the future, there is a long list of projects that are throughout the county, and those fees can be used to pay for a variety of improvements.
I see that as a bit of an attractant for children and perhaps even a liability, a short sidewalk of that type. I have a grave concern over the tanks Cole mentioned earlier. There's been no reclamation of this soil. It hasn't been tested, first of all. That would be on page six.
Yeah. Page six of the initial study?
Yes, thank you.
Or what? Okay. Six in the initial study.
Under project site history.
Yes. I'm speeding there, so... This is discussed in detail in the initial study. When you get to page 72, it goes through all of the studies and explains what they didn't find.
Pull the microphone a little closer, please.
I'm sorry. I can't understand you.
Sorry. It's discussed on page 72 of the initial study in more detail than the introductory material.
Okay.
And they didn't find anything.
I also remember environmental concerns when the sandal factory burned down. Has there been any interest in looking? Something about the glue or... My recall doesn't serve well, but there were environmental concerns when the sandal factory burned down on that very site.
The property owners and applicants have conducted environmental site assessments of the property, and that's the purpose of those assessments, is to determine if there are any hazardous materials on the site.
Yes.
And what they showed, that was negative, that they were not.
Thank you.
Okay. Head to Charlotte. Okay. Jerry?
Yeah. I'd like to call... I'm sorry, I don't have your name. The state park...
Mr. Mark.
Please.
Hi, Greg. Thank you. Thank you for coming. You mentioned in your testimony that you were concerned about the risk of delisting, I guess, if I can paraphrase that correctly. Can you tell me a little bit about what the process would be for that to happen? If there's been some experiences you could saw where that's happened with a similar park in another location? Or can you expound a little on how that might happen, or why that would happen, if it's happened before?
I cannot speak to the process of delisting. It's obviously, we're in the business of trying to get it listed. And our chief of cultural services division, who spoke, who was the very first speaker today, we've focused honestly so much on trying to convey this sense of place, that we had very limited time to look at such examples. But a member of the audience today told me to look up Tombstone, Arizona, who was delisted, according to her. I haven't truthed that, but a quick and dirty search on the internet did show some sites have been delisted. As to the reasons, I cannot truthfully say, but I'm sure it could be found, perhaps, on the National Park Service through their website, as that is a designation of federal importance.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Okay. Jerry?
Yeah. On the... I guess this one probably be for Duke. On the safety... Thank you very much. Appreciate it. On the... A lot of the safety concerns here, most or many of them were tied to pedestrian traffic and specifically, school kids. As you look at this, when we add these sidewalks, what will that do to foot pattern on there? Have you guys thought about that much? Is that... First off, am I asking the right guy?
Yeah. The frontage sidewalks at the Dollar General, those improvements are localized at the immediate frontage. The concerns that you heard this evening are talking about concerns that the store would be an attractor and would cause more people to walk along the corridor to go to the store to purchase items. One of the things that was studied, and I'm citing the Dollar General in Jamestown, they said... And you have a traffic expert right there in Ken Anderson, and I would recommend that you ask a question of him regarding pedestrian traffic and safety.
Great. So if I can call upon you then, I guess.
Mr. Anderson?
Duke, just put you on the hot seat.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Duke. You pull it off.
I think it's easier this way.
Okay.
I think it's turned on.
Ken Anderson with Katie Anderson and Associates. I'm sorry, can you, it was a question, what's the benefit of putting the sidewalk in?
Well, I guess the impact of the traffic, particularly kid traffic, as a result of the development and the impact of the sidewalk on that and what is being done to mitigate risk there and what more could be done to mitigate risk there?
Couple of things. From a standpoint of pedestrians, you want to minimize additional conflicts where people get on and off the road. The sidewalk right in front of Dollar General addresses that issue of their customers in and out of their parking lot conflicting with pedestrians. That's the local benefit that Duke was talking about. With regard to the rest of the community, he was speaking to information we have from Jamestown, which indicated a relatively few customers of that particular Dollar General walked to the store even though the residences are closer. On a Saturday, it was five or six pedestrians an hour to get that out of the way. With regard to schoolchildren, the Dollar General situation is very similar to the situation you have at the school itself. They put sidewalks in right in front of the school, but no additional improvements were made. There is not a plan for immediate installation of what we had talked about in our report, which is shoulder improvements in the area where the road isn't wide enough, cut banks and that type of thing. It would certainly be measures that could be implemented by the county under the fee program, as Duke said. I guess the fundamental answer you have here is the project will add a little traffic mainline on Parrot's Ferry Road, like any other business that would come in, like tourists who come. There is not a plan to facilitate additional pedestrian improvements beyond the sidewalks there that takes care of their local change, their local impact to pedestrian access.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Jerry?
Duke, give me one moment to comment out here.
Sure.
Oh, I guess this is probably for you. It has to do with the, there's been a lot of discussion about refinements of the building, if you will. I suspect people would never be happy, everybody would never be happy, but there were a number of very concrete steps that were set out. Some of the representatives here said, these things should be done if we were going to try and make it a little closer to being appropriate for the area. What is the flexibility the Dollar General has to take additional steps beyond what you've done so far in terms of making the building more Colombian?
Okay. I think I understand your question. So Jodel Cross Development, again, I work for Cross Development, we're the developer, we're going to own the property, we're going to own the building. Dollar General's a tenant, they're a proposed tenant to lease the building. So, long-term, we own the building, we own the land, we're the landlord, we take care of it. Changes in the building have been taking place since October of last year. It's been a long process, working with Alex, working with the county, working with Ms. Shane to get to where we are today, even meeting with a few members of, at the time, the Columbia community, specifically ones that were very interested in the historic aspects of the look of the building. It was suggested to us, we add, where we are today is based on suggestions from what we've received from the community that we met with, the people we talked to, emails received from the community members, Alex, and we did our best to work within the confines of a budget, because we have a budget we have to try to stick to. There's, at some point, it can be so expensive to build a building, it doesn't make sense to build it.
Of course.
And then, two, sticking within the guidelines of the community plan. And so, and they are, and I think that's important, they're guidelines, they're not requirements. And I think if you look at the overall kind of morph of the building from where it started to where it is now, to, and then certain aspects of the design that we could not change, 40 parking spots. We said we only need 25. County's absolute, no, you have to have 40. So we put 40 parking spots in. A concession we're willing to make to reduce parking, to reduce asphalt, and to make it fit more, as some people alluded to, fit better on the site. So there's other concessions we can make. Now, the building itself, I can't change the shape of the building. It's a 70 by 130 in dimensions. I don't have the ability to change that because it changes fixturing and it changes everything that has to do with the way Dollar General has set their stores up. But as far as the exterior, willing to work more with the county, with staff, to adapt it even more, but no one here can specifically say what it should look like. As one of the commissioners pointed out, not even the historian can say what it should look like and what we need to do to make it look like a building in Columbia. So 100% willing, absolutely, but need, like, the ability to sit down with someone who will say, okay, if you did this. The signs are painted signs, they are not a backlit sign, so it, we adapted to a degree of a guideline. Is it full-blown Columbia guideline? No, but again, it's a guideline, and it's an area in which we were able to go to a point where both our client and we felt like the county as well, staff, would agree that, okay, we've made some concessions. We may not have gone all the way, but we didn't stay all the way on this side either. So I guess it's a long way of saying, sure, there's things that can be done to the building to make it look more Colombian, as you would put it. I look at this, you know, and with the different parapets, the different elevations, suggested to look like multiple buildings in a row, and so it does to the best of its ability without being four independent buildings that have common walls dividing them, has the faux iron doors, has the shutters, has the awning, the decorative brackets. All that was encompassed, decorative lighting, so it's not normal light poles you're going to see at any other type of retail development, they're decorative light poles that we're using. Even the monument sign is frontlit from landscape lighting, so it's not backlit. So it won't be the harsh bright yellow light you see on most backlit signs. It'll be a more subtle light, and the lights are on timers, so they do go off after the store closes and come back on before the store opens. So yeah, this has gone from a very non-conforming building where originally started in October of last year to what you see now. And I would, and this is crazy, Weed's a long ways north of here, but the store here is what we built in Weed, and it's got the backdrop of Mount Shasta literally at its back door. And it's a beautiful store. It fits right into the community, right into the footprint of Mount Shasta, and a lot of time and effort was taken into building that store, very similar to this store where we've taken, you know, where there is no consistent design guideline along Parrot's Ferry Road, and we've taken a rendering and a design and a concept that, hey, this is a great starting point to start seeing what development could look like along Parrot's Ferry Road down the road. It's a long ways off for sure, for, I mean, to have development continue to grow along Parrot's Ferry Road, but again, we think this is our, right now, where we currently stand, the best look for the store for Colombian. But to answer your question, yes, I mean, there's other things we can talk about, we just have to be able to sit down at the table, and that can be a condition of approval. Sit down with the historic district and talk about ways to design the building. So that's not beyond your ability to approve this with additional conditions to mitigate any other thoughts or concerns that might be there. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. Oh, yes, Peggy, another question?
Do I understand you to say it is a hand-painted sign that you proposed with the lights on it?
I did not say it was hand-painted, but it's a painted metal sign. It's not a backlit sign like you would see on the Jamestown Dollar General or the Sonora Dollar General. It's a painted sign with lights that shine down onto it. Correct.
And somewhere in this material, I think I saw that you can go down as low as 5,000 square feet.
Our stores cannot go as low as 5,000 square feet. Dollar General's prototypical stores are 9,100 square feet. That's the smallest they can go. There's not a Dollar General anywhere in the country that's 5,000 square feet.
And...
That's, what we're looking at is a prototypical build-to-suit store. Now, could they move into a store and remodel something? I don't know. I can't answer that question.
I thought I saw something in here about that. The other question, getting back to the one I think I asked earlier, in terms of the delivery trucks. You're going to have three deliveries per week. How does that impact? I guess one of the big concerns I have is the safety of the kids primarily. When those things show up to make their deliveries, they're big, you can't see around them or under them or whatever, how do they pull in and deliver their goods and then get out of town?
Okay.
So to speak, without, you know, with a big safety issue.
Okay. So a couple of points to the number of trucks. We don't know what that number is, it's based on sales, and from what it sounds like here from the opponents, there won't be many sales, so maybe one truck a week. Reality, there's a large, there's a large variety of number of trucks that could come and go, but again, it's based on sales. So to answer your question on access, they come in off Parrot's Ferry Road from the south, they turn right onto Hauser Lane, turn right into the approach, they will, and I could pop the site plan up and show you, but they deadhead into the end of the property and then back into the loading zone, and then they will exit the same way. They'll exit back south out Parrot's Ferry Road to 49. So they don't even, they won't even get into the school area. They will stop basically at Hauser, it's where the truck movements will end.
Did I?
Peggy? Is that you?
Does that answer it, or was there?
Yes, I think it did. But I'd just like to make a statement. I happen to own the Groveland Hotel in Groveland. I have an 1849 Adobe building, and I have a 1914, my new building. And we get guests from around the planet going to Yosemite. We're a half hour to the gate. One of the things that our guests speak of so constantly is our quaint community, in fact, I just got an email today, somebody was complaining about our no parking signs. But they come in and they see what we have, who we are, and the fact that we don't have big chains and so on around. Somebody built a, what's the name of it, Subway down in Big Oak Flat, which everybody hates. But fortunately in Groveland, we don't have that. So I can really appreciate what these folks are saying about preserving the authenticity of the community. Groveland doesn't have the treasure of Columbia State Park, but we do have a great deal of history in our community. And the Germans especially love our Wild West history. They can't get enough of it. You know, they've seen all the good westerns and they're ready to come and see more. But I guess I just have a basic concern about the access and what it's going to look like to people coming in.
Okay, and I appreciate that statement. And I would tell you, there are countless people that have contacted us that are in support of the store. The opposition always speaks louder than the proponents. I've been doing this a long time, and that's how it just works, because people who oppose something want to be heard, people who want it typically don't come out and vocally say it, they just will shop there when it opens. I can tell you, there's far more benefits than just a store in Columbia. It has to do with saving money for people in the community, has to do with saving time from traveling, saving gas. We could go on and on about it. So I appreciate your concern, I appreciate your statement. I would just say there's an equal amount of people on the other side that would say we would love Dollar General to be here, it would be convenient for us to...
Stop, stop.
It would be convenient for us to shop here. And so...
Okay. Thank you.
This gentleman has a right to be heard, folks. Is that to cover your deal, Peggy? Okay, Charlotte?
Did I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I saw, I read, that your deliveries would not be made during prime traffic hours or school hours. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know exactly when the deliveries are made. They're made within typically, within during store hours, and so it's typically kind of mid-morning, which would be after school is in. Rarely anytime afternoon, 1 o'clock, there's a truck that I'm aware of delivered to a store. Again, it bases on volume of sales, and so that can fluctuate, but I would tell you, from my experience, most deliveries are, you know, mid-morning, off-peak hours, because they don't want to, again, they don't want to back their truck in and block, you know, peak hours of when pedestrians or traffic will be coming to the store to shop. So typically, truck deliveries are in the off-peak hours, but there's no set time, so I can't tell you it's going to be from 9 to 10. They may show up at 9 o'clock one week, and because of traffic or a delay, they could be at 10:30 the next week. So it will vary, but typically it's tried to be an off-peak so they don't interrupt, one, traffic flow into their store, and two, patrons coming in and out.
Just one more question. There was an earlier speaker that spoke about grocery shopping being a value. Do you consider yourself a grocery store?
Dollar General's not a grocery store. Dollar General is a general merchandise store. They carry some grocery items, but to that comment, most grocery stores do not compete on a full level with Dollar General because they have so many products that Dollar General does not offer. Fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, fresh meats, full-service delis, specialty items local to the area. So I can tell you, in our experience in developing Dollar Generals in rural communities, because that's where we develop, most of the local markets actually, I won't use the word thrive, but compete well with Dollar General because they carry products that Dollar General doesn't carry. So what can happen is, again, save money shopping at Dollar General, go to the local market and buy your deli meat or your fresh beef or your, you know, fresh vegetables. And so, yes, Dollar General's not a grocery store, they're a general merchandise store.
Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Jerry. You had some more?
Actually, just one more question. For, yes. The, your business relationship, you're going to be the landlord, your organization will be the landlord, your renter is Dollar General, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's an independent arms-length relationship between you and Dollar General. You have some long-term lease with them or something like that? What kind of term of commitment do you have with Dollar?
So we carry a lease with Dollar General. If they do still sign a lease with us, they will lease the building. The term is typically a 15-year lease with three, five-year renewals, but it can vary, it depends on the store, and, you know, remodels carry a different lease term than a build-to-suit. But in general, you know, it's a long-term lease. The town I live in in Texas has had a Dollar General in my backyard for 40 years, and I'm 40 years old, so it's been there since I was a kid. I do know they don't, they don't close their stores, they take care of their stores. I mean, the building looks the same as it did when I was 10 years old. So there's, we could go more and more about Dollar General, you know, and what they do for communities, but to answer your question, yes, it's a long-term lease that we have or they have with us as the landlord.
So your business really is dependent upon them at the, you know, do you have a Plan B? If Dollar General decides this wasn't such a great idea 10 years down the road, you'd still own the building?
I mean, sure, it would still be owned, so we would have to do, we would have to figure something out. I would lease it to some, you know, someone who would lease the building who needs the square footage, or, I mean, the reason we kind of, and the way the footprint stays the way it is, because it's a repurposable building, so I can, we can change that building fairly easily if we need to, to adapt. If, you know, say Claude's Market needed bigger space, they could...
Okay, let's do it.
You've heard an awful lot about opposition tonight. I think that was pretty obvious. You've mentioned that you, your experience is that there's a lot more opponents than there are proponents, and that's my experience too, being in this business a long time. Does any of this give you pause?
Give me pause for...
I mean, does it make you question whether the store is going to be successful? It sure seems like a lot of opposition to me.
So, I mean, for me, I don't work for Dollar Generals, I'm not Dollar General, so it doesn't give me pause as to whether they're going to be successful or not. I don't know. I can tell you that Pine Grove was mentioned as being beaten. The Pine Grove store opened in July, and it's one of the top-producing stores in the area. And it had 2,000 opponents sign petition, picketers during the process, and once the store opened, it is one of the best-performing stores in this area.
Okay.
So, to give me pause, no, you know, this is, this is the process we go through. This is, this is what we do, and it's good, and sometimes it's bad.
Well, thank you. That was it. The other question I had, really...
Thank you, sir.
Really for staff, and I think I know the answer because of my history, but the traffic mitigation fee and the fair share contribution are the same for this project as they would be for any other project. True?
As you know, the Traffic Impact Mitigation Fee Program is based on traffic generation rates, so depending on the size of any business, it's based on those traffic generation rates. So, bigger store, more traffic impact mitigation fees, smaller store, less fees. As far as the basis for the, the separate fee for the repairs to the Star intersection, they were based on the traffic study pay that they did, and how much traffic they generated at that intersection, and the dollar value of the improvements.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, what I'm getting at, Duke, is that if another project came up, you would use the exact same approach. If a project was being built in Jamestown, or was being built in Salisburyville, or in Twainheart, you would use the exact same approach. So, there were a number of people tonight who questioned how it was calculated, why the amount was what it was, and I just want to let them know that it would be, everyone would be treated the same way. It never collects the money that would be desirable to do the improvement, and having been in that seat for 12 years, there were an awful lot of improvements that we all wanted to make, that aren't, the dollars just aren't there. So, I have sympathy with that opinion, but I guess my experience tells me it'll be a long time before there's enough money to build that intersection, and the only way that happens is if more and more development occurs, so more money gets put into that pot. And what I heard tonight are people that don't want development, particularly in Columbia. I sympathize with that, but that actually works against the improvement coming sooner. So, I just point that out just more for benefit, and there was one gentleman that mentioned that some of us were elected. I don't know that anyone up here is elected. We're all appointed.
Okay, that covered, Peter? Okay, John, John Littori, you still awake?
I'm awake, and I have no questions.
Who are you, and what have you done with John?
Well, I, you have an angle here, because you probably got to get up about 5:00 in the morning to go to work, so, anyway, thank you, John. You're sure, okay. Anybody else? Cole, you got some more?
No, just one little quick. No, I did Google Tombstone real quick, and they were losing their national distinction because they were falsifying dates and changing facades in their actual historic district of their downtown.
Well, that's not very nice.
It was not about building, new buildings, it was changing dates and...
Wow.
Oh, okay. All right. Questions, pretty well covered, I think. Comments? Or a motion?
I do have a question.
Oh, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
You want to give him a microphone?
Oh, yeah, I'll give you a...
How about you give us, how about?
We got, go ahead.
Thank you. As an individual, I'm a supporter of individual property rights, but as a planning commissioner, my job is to balance property rights with the good of the community. Now, because Dollar General is a profitable corporation, that tells me that they have some, they offer some good to the community, they offer something that the community needs, and I was in favor of Dollar General in Jamestown. But Columbia is a special case, and I'm, I was moved by all the testimony we had tonight from the citizens of Columbia, and I'm not convinced that the negative impacts on this project have been mitigated to a less than significant impact, and in fact, in this location, I don't believe that they could be. Now, it occurs to me that everyone in the room could be satisfied, both those who are in favor and those who are opposed, if Dollar General would identify a location just a little bit further away from the park, but for this location, I'm going to have to vote no.
Motion to vote yes.
How we doing?
Okay, we can either discuss it further, or we put a motion on the table and then discuss the motion. Am I allowed to make a motion? John? You want to be it?
I'll go if you want.
No, I'm afraid it would be difficult.
Peter?
I was, well, let me back up. I worked in this community a long time. There were a number of issues in Columbia along the way where we disagreed. In this one, I don't disagree. I am a wild supporter of capitalism and in terms of the ability for the store owner and the landowner to do what they want to do, but I would agree with John that Columbia is special. It's different. You've impressed me with that over the years. You've impressed me that tonight. So, while I, probably 99% of the time, I would be in favor of this project, I can't bring myself to vote for it. And in so doing, I would make the motion with the findings for denial. One, number one, A and B, number two, A, B, and C, as presented by staff.
We have a second to that motion?
Second.
We do have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to...
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
I'd like to weigh a little bit. I, I think that we should continue to take this motion to question, because I think it's probably already pretty clear, might be clear where it's going to end up. But I do want to say that I think that there probably, with the appropriate conditions, that there probably is some ground for all of the things that, well, not all, many of the things that the community has expressed here to be dealt with, and it would require fairly massive efforts in order to be able to get to that point, but I do think there's work, you know, it might involve moving buildings, it might involve getting rid of some of the faux look of the building and making it look like a, making it more realistic and less like a movie set. There's a bunch of things that could be done, and given my brothers, I would, I would prefer to give the property owner and the, and the developer the opportunity to solve these problems as opposed to denying it outright. However, I think the motion should be taken to question.
Fair enough. Anybody else, ladies? Any comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
I was not able to hear the motion.
The motion was denial based on the findings on...
Blah, 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 blah.
Findings on whatever that page is, page three.
Page three and four.
There's a motion for denial and findings on that page three, John.
Thank you.
Let me just say this, we've heard a lot of good presentations and very passionate, very believable, and, you know, was very, very impressive, but the fact remains that we have to make some findings, whether we vote for something or against something. Findings. And so, a lot of the testimony we heard, very heartfelt, very passionate, doesn't give us real ammunition to develop these findings. We do have some findings. They are based on the fact regarding the relationship of this project to the Columbia Plan and to the Toomey County General Plan. We do have some findings. But a lot of the testimony we heard, folks, for example, we might as well say, a lot of you testified regarding the finance and the business, you were asking us to pick winners and losers. We don't do that, and that isn't government's role, pick winners and losers, and a lot of you emphasize that, and I sympathize. Boy, when that's government's role, we are in big trouble in this country, my perspective. So, I, I know how strongly you feel about that, but again, I've said this all along when I was supervisor, and now, government has no role to pick winners and losers. I'm sorry. But anyway, I do respect what was said along those lines as well as many others. But we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? If not, Ms. Shane, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy to. Please signify by saying yea or nay. Commissioner, aye.
Nay.
Wait a minute.
No, the motion is for denial.
Oh, then yea. Sorry.
Vice Chair...
Don't mean to confuse things.
Vice Chair Baker.
Nay.
Chairman Plan.
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier.
Aye.
Commissioner Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Presbilla. And Commissioner Littori.
And this is a motion to deny the application.
Yes.
I vote yea.
The motion passes on a...
That motion then passes a...
On a five to two.
Five to two?
Two vote, with Vice Chair Baker and Commissioner Presbilla voting against the motion.
Very good. Thank you, everybody, for your participation and the respect and courtesy you showed. Thank you.